Good evening, everyone. This is John Krueger, the president of the Board of Trustees of the Estes Valley Library District. We have a full board present. In addition, we have Sarah Walsh from the Friends and Foundation, and several staff members who will be sharing with us shortly. No public comments received, Claudine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So we will move directly to our consent agenda. Consent agenda includes three items. The Board of Trustees meeting minutes from December 13th, 2021, and both income and expense reports for the year-to-date November 30th and December 31st of 2021. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
It's not moved.
Lynn moves, and second?
Second.
Pete seconded, thank you. Does anyone have any of those items for edits? Or to remove? I don't see anyone seeking to do that. Hopefully, everyone read through the minutes and looked at the income and expense reports. All in favor of accepting the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye. So you need to unmute if you're muted.
Aye.
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 I think I heard everyone. That's unanimous. Thank you. And tonight, we're going to start the year off with some staff introductions. We have folks that perhaps have not met all of the staff, and we're going to do it group by group. And tonight is the administration team, and I'll turn it over to Claudine to begin.
Thanks, John. So I think it should work for everyone's screen, whether you're in the speaker view or group view, that whoever's talking, you can see. So right now, John is highlighted on my screen, but can everyone see me? Because it's not about me, but when Joe speaks, can you see Joe? Okay, good, it's working. This is something we've done in the past, and it is, we had hoped, of course, to do it in person. But we work with what we got, and what we got is Zoom. So this is an opportunity for us to meet you two. So John, Joe, and Cindy and I came up with a surprise, which is, we would love something similar of the board that we're going to show you tonight. With Joe's help, we'll put it together so that the staff has the same ability to know a little bit about you that you're going to learn a little bit about us. Hope that's agreeable, so.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm sure it was Joe or Cindy, so you betcha. So to get started, the library has four teams, and tonight, you're going to meet the admin team. Of the four teams, I'm obviously the supervisor for all the administrative staff. Allison is our somewhat new supervisor for tech services. Catherine Weedley, new supervisor for program and outreach. And Linda Wisniewski, new supervisor for patron services. So I'm the old dog in the group. And, but I have a team that's been here for a number of years. We were, we were the team that didn't turn over during COVID. So the team consists of the library director, Cindy, the accountant, Curtis, who you know does communications, and Joanna, who does everything else, right? So the main point today is they're going to do their own talking that will go on for each month, and it'll be about one minute. And then perhaps if you have any questions as board members at the end, when the slides are off, you know, we're here to answer any questions you might have. But here is the 4-1-1 on probably the team you know best admin, and I'll get started, Joe. So that's me. If you can believe it, it's been sixteen and a half years that I've been here. Surprise. The essential duties literally come off of my job description, and that's true for everybody that you'll see in the next few months. And then the keystones and projects that I'm working on in 2022. My main objectives are to increase library use, improve services, and invest in our workplace culture. But as you also know, a big part is our community needs assessment, and then creating the bridge to a new strategic plan, three to five years, starting in 2023. So that's what I do. That's what I do at the library. Remember, it's one minute. On the side of my photo, we stole this from Mark Riffle, who was the one who came up with this a few years ago. What about me? I love living in the mountains. I came here from Florida, but I always joke I got to the mountains as quick as I could. I'm one of those weird cat ladies that love cats. I garden in a very rocky environment. I'm bad at it, but I love it. My next favorite thing is to actually be at home, and like all good homebodies, I just dream about travel. So I do get a little traveling in, and once my partner is healed up, you'll be having more of me zooming in for these meetings, because I'll be out, out in the world. And that's Claudine in two minutes. Joe, are you next? Cindy?
Hi, hi, I'm Cindy. I'm the accountant. I've been here just about two and a half years, and I do the accounting, bookkeeping, payroll, et cetera. My projects this year, the main one is internal controls. We're going to hire an accounting assistant to help with some segregation of duties, dual control, and level of oversight. We're going to go paperless this year. Boy, if working remotely during COVID taught us anything, it was the value of digital information. So we're going to get ourselves, Joe and I are going to work together and get ourselves paperless. We're going to, the improved operations process is mostly related to purchasing. We have so many new employees, and we need to make sure everything, everybody is consistent in spending the library's money and understanding what their responsibilities are related to that, and then working with the patron services supervisor to develop best practices for overdue lost items and, and just long-term overdos. On a personal level, I'm a Colorado native. I was born and raised on the Western Slope and moved to the Front Range after high school. Got married and then ended up temporarily transplanted to Southern California before we were able to come back home to the mountains. I'm passionate about dogs. I do raptor monitoring for the National Park and the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Division. And when I have time, I love to go hiking in the mountains. So that's me in a nutshell.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Curtis Kelly, and I think I have one of the best jobs at the library. I'm the communication specialist, and it's really a joy, all of the positive things to share from the library and find ways to message those to the community. So I love, I love what I do. As, see at the top there, 2022, for the longest time, was a faraway year, but here we are. And it's long been planned as my retirement year. So in my journey through para, made that thirty-year journey through the rainbow, and the pot of gold is there. So I'm crunching my numbers and kind of figuring out the final, final dates and plans. But rest assured that we will have a real continuity as we, a new, a new person steps into this role here. You can see it in my duties that a good chunk of it is just the output of getting messaging to our email, patron emails, website, newspaper, social media. Another chunk is communicating, helping the staff make sure they stay in the know about what's happening at the library and, and working with the staff on communications that they send out. And then another chunk of working with our special projects, of which you see some of the strategic projects we have in mind for 2022, including the community needs assessment. Be working on a, sketching out a timeline for that. Bullet point two and three really kind of fit together as we're looking for continuing to refine ways that we measure our success in how we message, whether it be through door counts, program attendance numbers, collection use, meeting room use, those kinds of things. So we're really looking at 2022 to kind of help refine that and pin those down. And that final bullet point of activating marketing opt-in features. And we've had a long track of using email marketing for general release emails, but we really want to get into the business of special interest emails. So if you say, "I want to know once a month about what's happening in the maker space," or "I have preschool-aged children, and I want to know what's happening with early literacy, so send me a monthly update on that." So that's a big focus for 2022. And as you can see in my icons, I'm not a Colorado native like Cindy. I was born and raised in Omaha, Nebraska, but I've been in Colorado and in Estes Park since I was sixteen. I love writing and history. I love performing and storytelling. And that little icon there in the lower right says, "I've had the opportunity to study Espanol through much of my life, and hablo español bastante bien, and I can speak Spanish pretty well." So that's a little bit about me. And now.
Curtis, I'm going to interrupt just a moment.
Yes, John.
Several of our board members prior not aware that you did a first retirement from the library in 2015?
That's correct, John. Yeah, so I did step off staff. It just so happened that during that interval, we had been working on a financial literacy project at the Estes Valley Library, and we had written a grant right before I stepped back, and that grant was approved. So during that interval, I was working with the statewide financial literacy project with Marcia Yelich. So I like to say, "The apple has never fallen far from the tree," and hopefully that will be the case going forward, that we'll find ways to keep me connected in some creative way.
Good.
Thanks, John.
And now. Well, I think, well, I think I have the best job at the library. I have, there's such variety in what I do, and I really love that. So fifty percent administrative functions, which involves a lot of things, and including being here, which I really enjoy. Staff development and HR and management of volunteers, I love those as well, and I get to meet some very lovely volunteers. We're very lucky at the library with our volunteer team. My strategic projects includes staff professional development, which is one of the things I really enjoy the most. And I want to thank the board for your support of all this, the development and everything you pour into the staff. It's truly wonderful. And staff retention programs, emergency planning, paperless record management, like Cindy mentioned. They're all strategic projects in our operating plan that are in my purview as well. And so I've lived in Estes for eighteen years. This is almost as long as I've lived in England, because when I was twenty, I left England, and I lived in a lot of different places, including France, Bulgaria, Albania, Kosovo, Holland. And so, and so, so right now, I live in Estes, and actually, I love, I love this life here. And we still travel. We've taken Luke to our son to probably about fourteen different countries since he was born. So when we go over to visit my family, we'll usually travel. But I think we're all homebodies, and we just love our mountains here. We love hiking. We love, we love living in this town. So yeah, that's everything from me.
Thanks, team. So that's, that's everyone. I'll, we'll move to the questions after we, I think there's one more slide, Joe. That's, so thank you, just a reminder. So just to let you know the sequence, it'll continue. February, you'll have the IT and facility staff, patron services, and you'll end with program, which is now fully staffed, but you'll learn more about it. Joe, I only had, I wish I could have done editorials in every slide, because at the bottom of yours, I would have put teacher's pet. Because during our recent, recent Spanish language immersion, Joe was the favorite, because she was able, her facility, as a student, was quite high. And I think that has a lot to do with who you are, but also your world travel. When we're feeling mean, we do call you teacher's pet straight up.
Funny. We had a lot of fun.
Thank you, Joe. And I think, yeah, if there's any questions for the team, I'm sure you now know where we're all from.
Just unmute yourself and speak up if you have any comments or questions for any of them.
Did you mention, I may have missed it, did you mention Joanna, you became a US citizen?
Oh, yes, that's a big thing. Last March, March 2021, and the library staff surprised me one morning with a celebration and red, white, and blue cupcakes and a quiz on citizenship civics. So yeah, that was a big moment. It took me a while to get there, but yeah.
Great. Anyone else? We have a great group here now, and I'm so happy that it's been as consistent over the last few years, especially with COVID. As board president during much of this time, the work that you four have done has been exceedingly all expectations, and I appreciate it personally. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you all. That was great. That was helpful.
So Joanna is probably going to put together an email that I will forward, just so we're going to look for the same summaries from you. We'll use the photo we have from the website for you, and we're going to take yours on Thursday, I think. Thank you. And just a little something so that next time, you could, we know you best. This team knows you best. So for the other three teams, we're kind of excited about having it go both ways. So we'll take care of that in the next few weeks. So thank you. Curtis, you are, you are free to go, my friend. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. I always enjoy these. When we did them a few years ago with the staff at that point, it was very helpful to feel like you really know the staff. Okay, then we will move on our agenda. The, we're going to do action items first tonight, because there's some things that need to happen so that people can participate. Our first action item is a motion, resolution for trustee appointments. Whereas the Estes Valley Public Library District Board of Trustees, the district, submitted the following individuals to be appointed trustees. And whereas the Laramie County Commissioners and the Town of Estes Park Board of Trustees approve these individuals, as noted. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Estes Valley Public Library District as follows. The reappointment of Beth Ellis for her, sorry, it reads his, and it should be her second term as trustee for 2021. And that's wrong, too. Twenty-two through twenty-five. And appoint Ann Dewey to her first full term for 2022 through 2025. Going to have a motion to approve this resolution.
I move. No, go ahead, David.
Okay, I, I move to accept these appointments to the board.
Okay, thank you. And I'll take Pete as a second, if that's okay. Any discussion, and I apologize, I typed that, retyped that from last year's, and that's why there's a couple of typos in there, but we will get that corrected. Any comments? Questions? So this will formalize these two appointments for those time periods. All in favor, please unmute and say aye.
Aye.
Did I hear everyone? Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay, no. All right, it's approved unanimously then. Thank you. And so, Ann, and Beth, you're reappointed and can now vote on the rest of these. Okay. So we, in our January board meeting, we elect officers for the coming year. My practice has been to talk to people and put together a, a list of potential officers. This does not preclude anyone making other nominations. So Lynn, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I have that motion. Whereas the Estes Valley Public Library District Board of Trustees, the district, are required by its bylaws to elect officers at its January board meeting each year. And therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Estes Valley, Estes Valley Public Library District, that the following will be designated as the officers for 2022.
That's.
That, that is type drawing, yep. John Krueger, president. Lynn Lawson, vice president. Pete Johnson, secretary. David Hempel, treasurer.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'd second.
Okay, Kay seconds, thank you. So I will now open it up for any other nominations for any of these positions, if anyone would like to make such nominations. No one will feel offended. None? Okay, won't prolong it. If that's your desire and wishes for these four to take these offices, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 All right. Anyone opposed? All right, it is passed unanimously. Thank you for that.
John?
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you for serving another year as president. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome. I have enjoyed very much my time on the board so far. I have this year and one more year in my two terms. And we will be discussing later in our March board meeting, or study session, excuse me, study session, the issues around succession planning, as far as both board members as well as officers. Our bylaws have some particulars in there that limit some activities. And so we'll go through that and talk about how we can work towards some succession planning. Been trying to do a little bit of that already. Okay. Next is then, as president, it's my duty to appoint committees and any task force assignments. You should have a listing also in your board packet of the 2022 Board of Trustees. It has our names, our addresses, phone numbers, emails, personal emails. And you're all aware, you also have an email with the library. You can link those if you need to, if you haven't already. And that also states what term each of us are in and when that term ends. At the bottom of that page, you'll see the officers that you just elected, and then the committee assignments. This is pretty much, most of it is based on the priorities of positions. So the Government Affairs is myself as president, Lynn Lawson as vice president. The Finance Committee is always led by the treasurer, who is David Hempel, and Kay Weston is asked to continue on that Finance Committee. The Policy Committee is headed by the secretary, that's Pete Johnson. And I've asked Ann Dewey if she would then participate on that Policy Committee. Beth and I had had discussion, and she's asked not to be tied to a committee for this.
You're needed again.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Oh, okay. And then our friends lays on, will either be myself or Lynn, depending on the activities and our availability. And Sarah, you could just let both of us know about what kind of what's happening, then we'll try to decide who's really available and can attend the different activities. Perhaps on occasion, both of us. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay. Then the other thing I have is to approve, oh, I don't think we need to take a vote on those appointments, do we, Claudine? Okay, so it's an action item that the president makes, unless anyone objects. Okay, then we will approve formally the official 2022 posting location of our board meeting notices. They will continue to be on the library lobby, community bulletin board, as well as on the library website. I need a motion to approve that, please.
I move, we approve those.
Thank you, Pete. Pete moves. Is there a second?
I'll second that, John.
Thank you, David. Okay, I don't think, unless anyone has a question about that, that's been our practice for a number of years now. Okay, all in favor of approving the posting locations, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. Okay. Those are the only action items that we have tonight, to my knowledge. So we'll move on to our strategic discussion and reports. First one, from the Government Affairs. You should have board meeting dates. This includes both our regular board meetings, as well as our study sessions, and the topics that at this point, we would plan to be covering. Probably doesn't have quite everything. For instance, I notice under our June board meeting, that's usually our audit consideration. So that would still be our plan to approve the audit at that point. If there is no business for a board meeting, then we have in the past canceled that meeting with some advance notice. Any questions on this list of meetings? On the March 3rd, you could add, as well as our discussion of the Sunshine Law. That's when we'll also take up the discussion of succession planning as far as Board of Trustee members and officers. Anything else on that, Claudine, that you can think of, or Lynn?
Only that most, anything that involves our own internal activities, you can count on, but we have three that are dependent upon external folks, such as the Cal, the representative from Cal doing library standards, the results of the community needs assessment, and then the board retreat in September on strategic planning. Those are all dependent on people from, mostly from the state library, which is understaffed at this time. They said, "Please pencil us in." So consider those penciled-in dates. Okay, we will do our best to make it easy for them to work with us.
And it would be really good if, by the time we do the retreat, that we can be in person, if at all possible.
I'll get right on that, John. Just want you to know. Sorry, I was teasing you. I said I was going to get right on that, that COVID problem.
Yeah.
So we can meet. Okay.
Yeah, you may have answered this, but I was curious about the board retreat. Is that just during the study session time, or is that something outside of it?
Right now, we're looking at trying to do it with the Cal representative during that study session. So it would be a Thursday evening. If as things progress, we feel like we need more time than could be done, then we'll give some consideration to, and, and ask the board for their input as far as, you know, a different date or different timeframe. Okay?
Thanks.
Thanks.
And the plan on that is, uh, after, definitely after we have the results of the Community Needs Assessment. So we want to use that information in developing that next level of strategic planning. Okay? Okay? All right, so that's the meeting schedule. Um, Lynn? I'll ask you, that's all I had from the Government Affairs. You remember anything else? Nothing else? Okay.
Nothing else.
Thank you. So we'll turn it to the Finance Committee. David? Anything?
Okay, John, John, uh, not a lot to add. The, uh, the County Department submits this excellent report each month that details things very well. Um, few minor things to add. Uh, month 13 is progressing as I understand and should be available sooner than we have been too in the past. One of the advantages of the moving the accounting in-house and not waiting for the town's uh, input on such things. Um, so that's all moving along and that will also then, uh, be the final bottom line to decide what funds get transferred to the, uh, long-term reserves. Uh, after the 13th month report is finished. Uh, the audit is moving along as scheduled. Uh, the second year with this auditor, uh, had a very good first year. Uh, Cindy's already making plans. And it has been brought up and I don't know if Cindy's had any chance to talk to Uli about it. Of possibly even presenting the audit for approval in May. Uh, I don't know if that's something you want to consider about, John. And Cindy, I don't know if you've had any chance even to talk to Uli yet, but, uh, that's just something we've discussed in the Finance Committee. Uh, meeting, so.
That would actually be great as far as I'm concerned, uh, and I, I'm sure the Friends and Foundation would appreciate having the audit done before then because May is actually their deadline for submitting their 990s. So it'd be nice to have the audit done for them as well early.
Cindy, any changes in that thought process? Am I, am I saying that right?
Uh, David, you did great. There is, I have not spoken to Uli about that yet. I'm waiting, uh, for her first row communication on the audit. We've just so far set the date. Um, but when is, I'm assuming that we'll be talking between now and the end of the month. And I will bring that up to see if it's a possibility, if she can be flexible in those dates. Cause I definitely anticipate that the audit won't take near as long as it did last year.
Exactly. So, John, that can be up for consideration and, and voted on it, uh, as we know that information, so. Um, again, one of the advantages I, uh, that I see of moving the accounting in-house from, from the town. Uh, the County Department has spent two years and I think it's having in excellent shape. I think we're moving forward, uh, very well with it, so. Um, other than that, again, the report speaks for itself. If there's any questions, uh, Cindy is here obviously to answer them too, so.
Right. So that's in the monthly administrative report is, uh, the financials, uh, report that David's referring to. I guess I have one question and then I'll open it up if anyone has any others is, uh, probably for Cindy specifically. Uh, is there any, uh, significant carryover that will show up different from the December expenditures?
I, I haven't seen anything significant so far. Uh, there's a little bit of acquisition spending that the invoices came through. And obviously some like the waste management bill and those kinds of things which are small. Um, everything just looks pretty normal so far. No, I, I don't anticipate huge differences at all.
Okay, so we're gonna be well underspent for the year. Um, budget to actually spend.
I hope everyone noticed that, that bottom line of, uh, 650,000 surplus. Um, to come out of another COVID year in, in such shape is, is, um, a surprise to say the least. Uh, we all know the reasons why that is and that will change in future years, but it just stabilizes all of the long-term reserves, everything like that for future changes, so.
Yeah. I think you were looking at November with that number that you gave us, David. I think the December one is a little over 400,000.
Did I get it wrong? Okay.
That's all right. We have both those reports in there, so.
Okay, still a, a significant amount.
Yes.
Uh, for such a year, so.
Yep. Okay, any questions, comments for the Finance Committee or Cindy? From anyone? Nope? Okay. Very good. Uh, then we'll move on to our Library Directors' Reports. Claudine?
But, uh, Cindy, you really do write, uh, very thorough reports. Thank you. It, it makes it easy for the, for the staff as well, definitely the board. Um, Joe, of course, also, I had to mock her for the Spanish for librarians, but, uh, she really did put together terrific training for all the staff. We were divided into two groups, you know, absolute beginners and people like me who speak, uh, Spanglish. And the people who speak actual Spanish were the teachers assistants. And next time you're in the library, you'll notice there's little stickies everywhere so we can re, you know, remember a little bit of what we've learned and, um, we're off to a great start, so. Um, I just wanted to give attention to Joanna's, you know, very quiet and very constant behind the scenes successes of moving the staff forward uh, to be better than we are. Um, in terms of the Director's Report, uh, I hope, um, I did link to rather lengthy articles. So, uh, there's no test. You don't have to have read it by today. But I, I promise you I wouldn't send it your way if I didn't think it was relevant. And I probably would have just put it offline in an email. But this is something I wouldn't mind the public seeing too, you know, as part of your public documentation. I, I do think that, um, equity, diversity and inclusion training, like so many things today is now almost itself a polarizing exercise. And, um, I hope you can see that what this, uh, the theory of enchantment does ideally, uh, is above that fray. Um, and then even the, uh, the article about the Memphis Public Library, I found it incredibly motivating. Um, and, um, I, I thanked Kay Weston by mistake because the person who put it in my box just said, I think you should read this, Kay. And I said, Kay, thank you for this article. And it was Kay, the employee, but then Kay read it before I did. I mean, before you guys all got it and also thought it was perhaps worthwhile. Is that fair to say, Kay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so in terms of, um, our admin report, if there are any questions I can answer, and then, um, I want to talk a little bit about Sarah's report because I dropped the ball on that, but I can pick it up again. So before we move it over to the Friends and Foundation, is there anything administrative I can answer?
Claudine, the, the circulation numbers.
Oh, you're on the next report?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem. We can move right to it if you'd like.
Let's finish this first.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
No, that's no problem. There's three reports.
Yep.
It can be confusing. The objective was to simplify things. These are just admin monthly. You saw it at the end. The operating was just measures. And then we throw in at the bottom a little operations highlight, so. If this is more confusing, let me know. Yeah.
I'm trying to do everything off an iPad and I can't actually look at the reports while we're doing this, cause
I understand.
That's where the report.
Well, uh, then if, if, uh, Ann, did you have your hand up? No, okay. Um, John, uh, do you, shall we save, uh, the Friends and Foundation to the end?
No. Sarah? Why don't you move forward with, uh, Friends and Foundation report?
Sure, thank you. Um, the MOU goal of January is for our, um, Friends and Foundation to show you our plan for fundraising as well as our budget. Um, so I'm just gonna go over the, the highlights of that if that works for everybody. Um, in 2022, we have a very large goal of raising 480,000. That's about 175,000 more than, um, we had promised last year that we would raise. But never fear, um, we are all excited about this. We currently have eight board members, um, and we're looking at a little bit of a different format um, for how we operate. We're gonna, um, trend away from committee meetings, um, and more formal board meetings and really get down to what we enjoy doing, which is having fun. So we're gonna meet monthly. We're going to, um, brainstorm during those meetings, have less formal meetings, but still get our business done. Um, we're going to try and host groups again in the library like Women's Club and Newcomers. Um, and the Summer Residence Associates, really cultivate our donors, bring them back into the library, remind them, um, of, of what we do with the library. Our big event of the year will be our author event on June 17th. We will be hosting Craig Johnson, um, up at the Pavilion at the Stanley. I hope you will all attend. Um, just till that you all know, John Cullen has very generously given us that space as well as the food that evening. Um, so really it is an opportunity for our Friends and Foundation to raise quite a bit of money. Um, and a big thank you to the Stanley and John Cullen. Um, let me think of.
Can I throw something in there, Sarah?
Sure, of, of course.
So, um, Sarah has asked, and Annie too, I guess, the, uh, their board to, uh, host four guests at a hundred dollars per ticket. Uh, I'd like to throw that challenge out to our board as well. I think it would be great to have that kind of representation from our board and, and you inviting some guests, uh, to come along with you. If you're gonna be around for that, I can vouch, since I was on the Friends and Foundation Board when we had Craig Johnson here before. Uh, he is a wonderful storyteller and very entertaining. So you'll, you will enjoy it.
Thank you so much. Yes, we're, we're very excited to have such a large space to host an author. Um, and really hoping, um, we will continue this as our, uh, special event. Um, we took a break from it, um, for a bit, but, you know, John had mentioned, uh, Craig Johnson wasn't our last speaker, but we had, um, big name speakers for about 20 years and then took a break from that. We're trending back towards that. Um, because of course, having a signature event for our library, what else would we do but bring a, a great author? So hoping to continue that trend and hope this, hope this year goes well with, with COVID and whatnot. We're already a little bit worried about that. Um, but hoping, um, I don't know if all of you have been to the Pavilion, but it does have a large, beautiful glass door that opens up, so you really can get quite a lot of fresh air into that auditorium, which is nice. Um, so if any of you are concerned that we are agreeing to raise about 175,000 more, please do not be concerned. Um, we luckily are in a position where we have, like you are, it sounds like, we have quite a lot of money in our reserves. Um, so even if we didn't raise a penny this year, which I'm sure we'll do, we still will have the money in our reserves to meet our commitment to the library. So never fear, we're, we're starting a year of having fun, hosting groups and doing what we do, which is raise money. Any questions about our plan?
Anyone? Okay. We do stay in touch together. Uh, we have, uh, somewhat regular quarterly meetings, uh, Claudine and myself along with Sarah and Annie Finley, uh, to make sure that we all know what's going on with each group and, uh, have those discussions have been very, uh, helpful over the last couple of years.
Um, John, I, I did not have a question, but Sarah, just congratulations on another good year at the Cliffhanger. Uh, you know, statistics, yeah. Um, very impressive.
Thank you very much. We are, um, we're always recruiting volunteers, so if any of you want to volunteer, if you know, you have friends who want to volunteer, we're having a lot of fun over at Cliffhanger and we'd love to have you.
Great. Okay. All right, let's move then back, uh, Claudine, to you with, uh, the rest of your reports. You're muted.
Thanks. Uh, Lynn, I'd like to pick up where we left off with you, uh, and answer questions, you know, the, the, the quarterly report is by nature long, long. Um, but we hope it's pointed. And, uh, let me start with the questions and then I might circle back to something. So Lynn, what was on your mind?
Sorry, I was in the wrong place before. Um, the, the 2021 circulation numbers look fantastic. Is that because the comparison is to 2020?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're not trying to be sneaky. It's just compared to the worst year of circulation on record. Yeah.
I had a. It looks fantastic. Um, did you, did you compare it to, uh, a year that's not a COVID year?
We can, we have, uh, sampled Beth. The answer is no, we haven't done year end, but we easily can. It's not that hard. Um, and happy to report it, but we did it in the middle of the year. I think, uh, maybe it was Kay who asked, like, how are we doing? And, uh, we were with 2019, we were still above 2019, but here's the, the trickery. Um,
Auto renewal.
The smoke. Yes, ma'am. Yeah. It's, there's a lot of smoke going on and we, we want to be, uh, honest about it and, and we can pull back all the layers and give a much more robust end of year report once everything is settled. How does that sound?
Sounds great.
Okay.
And we, and we will have an April study session with the annual collections report, which has a lot of that information in it as well. Great.
Thank you. Any other questions on the quarterly report? How we're doing strategically?
Or any comments about it? I guess I would say that given the continued issues around staffing, uh, a number of the objectives have not been able to be accomplished because of that, along with the COVID limitations, restrictions. Uh, and so we'll keep all that in mind as we move forward. There's currently four positions posted for the library, so we're down there. Uh, we have people that are now quarantined or um, getting tested. Um, so that limits staff whenever something like that happens. And I think the board is fully understanding of those circumstances.
Thanks, John. That might be a good segue to the 2022 plan, which you all previewed, I believe in December. And the, the biggest takeaway from that meeting was a very Socratic uh, statement from one of you that said, maybe you shouldn't measure every moment and everything. Kay, and, uh, we, I hope you see the evidence of, of us pulling back. Um, I, it was a pretty simple assignment. I simply asked the leads of each, each objective, what would you, what do you think you can deliver and what would you like to put a pause on? So this isn't me, this is the people responsible for those activities. So I think it's a pretty fair representation of what the staff themselves feels that they can deliver. John, with, you know, understanding that I, none of us can predict, uh, what the next year will truly be like. So, um, that's our, that's our best, um, offer, but Kay, it was really well received from the staff, so thank you for that comment.
No. And we'll go into more details of the updated master plan, uh, for 2022 at our February study session.
Correct. Uh, the staff goes
Into the detail.
Into the detail tomorrow. So we as a staff, um, in between donuts and coffee will, uh, at great social distance. Um, literally, uh, we'll be reviewing, uh, this together, um, so that we're moving forward.
Okay, and then with, with us, with the board, uh, February 3rd.
February, thank you, yes.
February 3rd.
Are there any questions about this in advance though, rather than just, um, I don't want to make sure you all feel like you don't have to wait till a, a future meeting? Was there anything that came to mind?
Anyone?
It's okay.
Okay. So the version that, uh, you come up with after your staff gathering.
This is it. We're done.
This is it. Okay.
Yeah, this is it. We're simply going into a little bit more detail because like with any organization, I know what I know and the other person knows what they know, but we're gonna have a chance to say how, how these things are related. Um, can I go back to something a few clicks back, John, which is Sarah? Sarah, you sent me the attachment that Joe showed on the screen and I didn't include it. Would you like me to forward that out to the board?
Sure, um, along with our budget, just to follow what we promised at the MOU.
I apologize. I'm sorry about that. Thank you for catching it. I'll get that out. You bet. Okay. Um, John, that, that unless there are questions, I think, you know, we're at risk of reviewing the same material too often. So, uh, thank you for seeing what we've provided. The last document is just a reminder of how and why we, we report the way we do. Um, doesn't mean it's perfect. It just means it's our best effort. And you can always analyze the value of these reports with me mid-year, at the end of the year and say what would be more meaningful to you as the governors of the district. So, um, that's the end of my report, John.
Thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments? Thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments on for Claudine tonight?
Yeah, Claudine, the February study session about needs assessment process, is that going to be by you or do we have somebody coming to talk about the process or?
Great question. Right now it's just me, Pete. I have a couple of points on that is what I'd like to do is, and again, not to overwhelm you with material, but to show you some samples out there. So those of you who went to Cal last year got to see what the hubbub is about, the Colorado Association of Libraries Conference. And the rest of you have just been trusting those who attended the conference to see its value. So I'd like to send out a few of those in advance, Pete. And then Lynn and John and I were in conversation about how broadly do we need to provide an RFP process to get our needs met? So John, Lynn, I'm not sure if now is the right time or if you want to talk about it in February.
Sure, since it's been brought up. Lynn and Pete and I were at the Cal Conference and the Grand County library director presented their results of a survey, community survey that was much more extensive than the two I'm familiar with during my involvement, either with the foundation or now with the library that we've tried to do on our own. And it was done by a consulting firm. The cost of that is above and beyond what our financial policy states that can be approved without having an RFP and trying to get at least three bids. So we've had a little bit of discussion so far and my plan would be to bring it to the board when we have a little bit more information and discussion to potentially bypass that procedure of the financial policy. So you can review the that part of the financial policy and decide if you would agree to that or not. The intent being that I don't believe there's very many organizations that can provide what was provided to Grand County and what I think some of us at least would like to see done this time here in the Estes Valley. So that'll, that'll be for actual action item at some point, but we'll have further discussion and see more of the information that Claudine is going to give to us before we bring that up. Okay, anyone? Okay. So in February, let's see, is that in February too? Yeah. So February 3rd, we'll have at least the opportunity to have a little bit further discussion around that, the potential process on getting moving on a community needs assessment. And you'll be able to see some of the results that other districts have have gotten with theirs. And if you are not familiar with the last one that we did, Claudine, is that still on our website? Or maybe Joanna knows?
We'll just make sure it's on there by tomorrow morning, John.
Well, it's not a rush.
Removed because we put the operating plan up this bridge year of 2022, but we can put it back up.
The the survey information from
Oh, the survey.
The last survey.
Do you mean the satisfaction survey?
Yeah, the the last survey that we did with the community, which was what, five years?
It's got to be five years now. And yes, that is still up. And we, you know, since I'm sending out Sarah's.
Why don't you send the link for the for the board so they can see what kind of survey was done back then and compare it with what you send out from these other communities.
Will do. John, I wanted to ask Pete if he, now that he knows it's just me, is there something you were hoping to accomplish February 3rd that you'd like to direct?
Well, not at all. It's just curiosity.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Very good. I think we have covered all of our strategic discussion and reports then. Does anyone have any new business that was not on our agenda? I see none. So upcoming meetings for us are our board study session that we've been talking about some Thursday, February 3rd, 6:30. It will be by Zoom again. Hopefully things are going to start settling down a little bit with this progression of so many people being tested positive. Regular board meeting is Monday, February the 21st. In the past, we have moved that to the Tuesday following President's Day. But back in October, the schedule for library closure that we approved does not have that day as a closure. And so we felt we could just, we could go ahead and move that back. That is a holiday. If you know you would be gone at your earliest possible and or not be able to participate via Zoom for any reason on that date, please let us know. So that as it is a formal US holiday, we could change that. But right now our plan is to have it on the Monday instead of moving it over to the Tuesday, 6:30 PM. Friends and Foundation membership kickoff is February the 4th. Sarah?
We actually had to delay that over concerns of COVID. We don't have a date yet. We're going to work on finding a new date for that this coming Thursday. So I'll let you know as soon as you know.
All right. Thank you. I was kind of wondering about that. Okay, those are the upcoming meetings then, and I appreciate everyone's participation and presence. Please stay safe and healthy. And it is now 7:27 PM.